...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a reasonable, liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with the school committee chair report. We are compiling our fiscal year 16 budget as we speak. I have communicated to the schools that we'd be looking at a line item of $50.2 million to start off with, and I'm hoping to release a draft budget around April 15th, our tax day. So far, we have only seen a budget from the governor's office in the state, so the House and the Senate have yet to release their versions. We expect those to happen in the next couple of months. They're actively deliberating those as we speak right now. The governor's budget does have a lot of cuts in it. For education, for example, there are 11 items that have been consolidated, many of which we actually received funding from, including the kindergarten grant. And then that overall line item was cut by $1.6 million. So there's some consolidation, which is good, but then there was an overall cut. And we believe that those cuts disproportionately hurt urban and rural schools. For example, there's cuts to charter school reimbursement, transportation, and so on. In the, looking at the past couple of years, between fiscal year 14, which ended last June 30th, until this year, which is fiscal year 15, the state budget actually gave us $1.223 million more. So it rose by $1.2 million from 14 to 15. From 15 to 16, which starts on July 1st, we've actually seen a decrease of half a million dollars. So that's one of the reasons why this hurts a little bit. But we are working on a budget, and we are looking to sustain services, and of course, we're actively identifying line items that we will speak to the state legislature and to our representatives to try to lobby for funding, to try to get our budget in a better place. We are expecting that the city budget will increase in expenses by at least $1.6 million. So we have a $1.6 million increase in expenses, and we have about a half a million dollar decrease in state aid. We do have some revenue sources generated from the city side that should make up for some of that, including increased revenue from Great Wolf. We get a line item called a room tax. So the more people that stay at Great Wolf, a certain percentage of their stay goes into a room tax fund. We're expecting that line item to increase by potentially a couple hundred thousand, so that's always a good thing. And there is also some other sources of funding that we're reviewing right now, things like, you know, motor vehicle excise tax, building fees, things that kind of show that people are building more, they're buying more cars, signs that the economy is recovering. We're expecting increases in those line items as well. When the economy was hurt, we saw decreases in those line items, and that hurt our budget. So even though the state potentially has some recovery, but it's not really translating to some funds, I guess on a positive note, we are seeing some slight recovery on the city revenue side. And we're going to kind of put that all together, and I'm going to be presenting a very draft preliminary budget on April 15th. The permanent final budget that I'm going to be submitting is actually due on May 15th. So I'm sort of giving the public, other elected officials, about 30 days to review the budget, provide any major comments, and I can do my best to incorporate those in 30 days, and then resubmit that back to the city council. There'll be budget hearings, and then hopefully that'll be approved by the end of June. So that is the process for there. And as we identify things that we want to lobby for at the state level, if there are certain dates for lobbying, if there's testimony that we want to create, letters from the school committee via the superintendent and myself, we will make sure to let all the school committee members know, so that we can make our collective voices known. Okay, moving on to the resource committee.
That would be Pete Stevens.
We work in the meeting, it was canceled, we didn't have a forum.
Okay. Policy meeting. Marissa?
Marissa, I can update on some of our conversations. We've been looking at a couple of policies. We're looking at a draft at this point of a rewrite of the homework policy, and we were looking at worker permit policy. You'll see that on a second read. It's on our agenda, this is a special read, but if Marissa's not here, I'm not sure how that will work. But that's, so there have been a couple of policies that we looked at. Just trying to remember Paula, the last one we talked about. Sorry, but I know those two were part of our focus last meeting.
If Marissa comes, then we can ask her for an update. Student support.
We just had a meeting before this meeting. It was fantastically rich and detailed. Jeanne, would you like to share a little bit about Junior Honor Society, and then we'll just go through the items briefly for folks?
Yeah, I think we were just trying to get more information about where the Junior Honor Society stands at the middle school level, and it's good to have a report that all of the middle schools have a Junior Honor Society. And I think at this point, we're just going to be looking into kind of making sure they're all operating on similar kind of wavelength about the community service component, and trying to really encourage our middle school kids to engage in community service like the, their high school counterparts do. So, that's that.
We also had an update on park. I'm sure everyone watching knows that the park tests have been administered and are continuing to be held in our schools for a number of grades. And we are doing this as a test, the grades do not count this time. But Paula, do you, can you give a little bit of an update? It's a deeply gigantic project.
Well, the, every school has schedules, every school has staff dedicated to supporting teachers and students as well. We have, I think, two weeks left in this section, the performance-based, and then, I believe, four weeks for the end-of-year assessment. So we have a few weeks of a break, and then we do it all again for four additional weeks. So it's about 40 days in all in the testing calendar for this particular assessment. I think our students are hanging in there. The data will not, it won't count towards accountability, but we will have reports in the fall, sometime in October and November. But it's pretty exciting, and I think our students are responding, all the folks out in TV land, students are responding very well. We really appreciate all their cooperation.
Other items we had are lime awareness. As the snow finally recedes, that means that the grass will grow, and the mice will run around, and they'll bring ticks, and the ticks may or may not have lime. So Pam Rivers, our nurse leader, and I, and with Steve Curry on the Board of Health, and Nate LaRose in the mayor's office, and with Paula and Andre, our superintendent and assistant superintendent, talking about ways to just sort of raise awareness that lime exists. And so, we want kids to play outside, bottom line. We have playgrounds, please, go play, go be healthy, go be outside, but be smart about it, and really check yourself for ticks. So we're looking at ways to do some information, some handouts, and I just heard from Nurse Deb Mayo, who is a school nurse in different schools, that she will be able to come to our Pittsburgh Public Schools tent during the block party, which is July 3rd in downtown Pittsburgh. And she can talk certainly about some of these issues, so even mentioning the prospect of Lyme disease, people's dogs and cats get it too. So if you're feeling a little bit logy in the summer, and you don't think it's flu season, get yourself checked, but check for ticks when you come inside. Also, we talked about the arts program. Superintendent Ravenel did an absolutely wonderful thing, that we had been talking about finding out, what are we doing for arts in our schools? So the arts teachers, and not just art, visual arts, it's also performing arts, musical, digital, every kind of, you know, every kind of art. The teachers all filled out a survey that was, I believe, five questions, and we will be kind of looking at this and seeing, and probably bringing it forward to our next student support meeting. But parents and grandparents should absolutely know that the arts are alive and wealthy, wealthy, the arts are alive and healthy in our schools. We have a lot going on. And we also were very happy to hear from teachers as to what they needed, if they needed supplies, if they needed room configurations, access to sinks, and so forth. So really, really good information, and we actually have some performing arts tonight, which is excellent. So this is, I think the takeaway from this is that the art teachers would like to connect with one another, not just within schools, but across the district. So we're putting that kind of on our list of things as to how we can do this in a professional development realm, or whatever, whatever it were. Jeanne and Matt, anything to add to student support?
We will also be adding, Janet Harrison, who's our school champion, has done a survey on school choice, which is why do families, why are families not, if they had been attending our schools, what are the reasons why they're not? So getting really deep information, this is of huge concern to everyone around this table. We work very hard, and our teachers work very hard, and our principals, and cafeteria staff, and everybody works really hard to make our schools really great places for every child. And it's a big project. So we'll be reviewing that in our next meeting and bring it forward. So I'm really glad we have student support. This is a, I think we're only a three-year-old subcommittee, but we're covering a lot of ground, and it's all very dynamic. Great. Thank you. School personnel?
Well, report.
And the executive committee report, as I've discussed in the past, Salem Mayor Kim Driscoll and I are co-chairing the Building on What Works Coalition, and we've released a letter to our partners that says, "The Building on What Works Coalition is a new group of educators, business leaders, and elected officials who believe in empowering high-needs communities to improve their education systems. The coalition has come together to propose a competitive fund for communities that are ready to focus their collective energy on this work, and are prepared to be held accountable for tangible results. In fiscal year 2016, we are asking the legislature to establish a new $75 million fund that high-needs communities could apply for and make use by expanding access to high-quality early learning opportunities, by expanding learning time available to K-12 students, and by designing innovative learning systems." So as the House and Senate debate the fiscal year 16 state budget, elected officials need to hear from you. There's sort of a click here on the email message where people can send a message to their local legislature, and then we are thanking people for their support. And then there is a website, buildingonwhatworks.org. So we're sending that out to our coalition. We're also trying to get an understanding on the subcommittee that's looking at redoing the education funding formula, and at this point in time, we believe it's actually a very, very narrow focus, and we're trying to figure out how relevant that is to us. So we'll provide more updates on that. And last but not least, our student report.
Hi, everyone, how are you?
Fantastic. I like to hear it.
So spring sports have recently started at the high school. You can tell that all the athletes are loving it. This past week, we've finally started to go outside, finally. This has been a while. We've had a lot of testing recently, as Ms. G. Quinto mentioned. We've had MCAS, we had a park in a month, we've got the AP exams. So you can tell everyone's sort of nearing the end of the year. We're excited that it's almost over, but it's starting to get kind of tired. As far as student life goes, prom is coming up, big every single year. The senior class is gearing up for the big traditional Mr. FHS. So much fun. The junior class is having a book fair for McKay Arts Academy, so we are collecting books, middle school, so fifth to eighth, and if you guys want to make donations, or if anyone listening wants to make donations, you can drop your books off at the Pittsburgh High Main Office, please.
Elizabeth, when is that going to be, the book fair?
April 30th is the tentative date, but that's liable to change.
Guidelines in terms of what kinds of books, or, you know?
No, the books that we have collected are, a few of them are like historical, I've donated plenty, we've had lots of donations from the students and even some of the faculty. We have about 150 right now, and we'd actually like to double that figure, but any kinds of books are fine.
And new books, old books, both?
Yep.
And where do we send those to again, the books?
The Pittsburgh High Office, the main office.
When is the prom, and when is Mr. Pittsburgh High School?
I don't know either of those off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Prom is May 16th.
Thank you.
May 16th.
And I think Mr. FHS is the 26th of April?
April.
I want to say, maybe the 25th. It's either that Wednesday or Thursday.
Where's the prom being held?
At Great Wolf Lodge.
Great Wolf.
Oh, wow. That's first time there, right?
It is, yes.
Yeah. It really, it's great to see it back being held in Pittsburgh and not have to go out of town.
I'll email Jeremy and get a calendar now, because things are starting to heat up of, you know, all these events that are coming.
Is there a Miss FHS?
No, I don't think so.
Just a Miss.
And then, I can see in our audience, we have some people from The Wizard of Oz here. I know personally, I love the musical every year that it happens. It's the 16th, right? Well, it starts the 16th?
Yes.
Okay. The students have been working really hard. I got to see bits and pieces of the set today. It looks wonderful, so you should absolutely go out to see it, tell all of your friends. And then the last thing that I have is the 5K for Little Feet. I think I might have mentioned it to you guys before, and I passed out some flyers, and I have some extras if anyone wants to come and fix them up. It's run through NHS, and we raised money to buy sneakers for students who don't have them, because it's a road race, and so we love running. We want other people to have that opportunity too. You can walk or run, it doesn't matter. It is the 26th, and people who pre-register get a T-shirt, so a little extra incentive there. But we would absolutely love it if any of you came out and supported this completely student-run and organized event.
Where do we get our shirt, when?
The day of the race.
Oh, the day of the race.
The 26th.
Can I take a car ride up the big road?
You only get half a shirt.
You can be the grand marshal in a car.
Any more questions for student?
Could I just add that I know that you guys volunteer it so much, and I think so many of the schools really appreciate it. When I was at the Bunny Breakfast last week, I saw lots of high school kids volunteering and running all the games, so that's, I mean, that's great, that the kids really come back and help out in all the other school events.
Great point. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the approval of March 16th meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
I was going to say you were there.
Sorry. I second that.
Okay. Any questions, comments, revisions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to any business or communications.
I've got a few. Ooh, Lizzie, one sec. Tell the high school that we will have therapy pets on Thursday at noon at lunch. We will have registered therapy cat Wendell Cat and companion cat in training, PETA. So we will be set up sort of on a back table, so let kids know, please. So all the lunches will be there at noon time, and people can come and de-stress by petting a kitty cat, and learn about Twin City Paws Pet Club.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to try to do this, it just with all the testing, it's like, come on, this is an easy one. The other item I had was Andre sent us a notice, and then multiple notices, about Chris Landry, who has, doing this flipped classroom. Well, he's doing it here in Pittsburgh, but now people in Greenville, and Washington, and Worcester, and Boston, the Boston Herald. The Washington Times, yeah, the story has been picked up basically across the country, and about a half dozen outlets are sharing it. And Matt and I both know, having, you know, being retired, ink-stained wretches, well, let's say scriveners, that when you get your story picked up across the country, that's a huge impact. So congratulations to Chris Landry for innovating, and congratulations to Michael Hartwell of the Sentinel for writing a very good in-depth story on the flipped classroom. So we are once again pioneers. And the final piece is the gala, which is, we have permission to have our banner on Lower Main Street, and also across John Fitch, and it is going to be spectacular. We are going to have student waitstaff, we are going to have original storytelling about Pittsburgh schools. The invitations are going out now. Now, in terms of where people can pick up tickets, we are sending out invitations, but I meant to ask that-
Right now, it's just we're looking, we'll probably have a couple, two or three places where they'll be placed in stores, but we don't have those yet.
Okay.
Oh, you do? Okay. Up to the minute news.
Thank you.
Tickets can be, you can call the school district for more information, 345-3200 is the phone number, but you may pick up your tickets at DeBomis and Dab 900 Main Street, and also at Cababalicious, which is-
Oh, yes.
Located on Massachusetts Avenue, just down from Walmart. And also, you'll see in a press release that goes out, Claudia Stevens' number is listed as well for getting more information about receiving tickets.
And then central office, so at any time, people could come to the enrollment center and ask, and we'd have them available at central office also.
That's really terrific. So three places to purchase tickets for the gala. It is just $50 to have a whole evening, a banquet with steak tips, and, you know, wonderful sides, desserts, and super entertainment. The silent auction is just spectacular. We've got some great experiences, we've got some, you know, pretty elaborate prizes and giveaways, and I think we have one more, we have one more school committee meeting, which is, would be on the 20th, to really pipe it. Go ahead.
So just other things, so now we also have a band, so there'll be live music throughout the whole dinner.
Wow.
And before that, during the hors d'oeuvres. So hors d'oeuvres are from 5:30 to 6:30 in the lobby, and Rosemary Reynolds will be playing the harp, and Vinnie Rodriguez, an alumni of Pittsburgh High School, will be playing the piano. That'll be entertaining outside, and there will be a small table with a preview of some of the really cool items in the silent auction, and those items are growing every day. And then the dinner will be inside, we're going to be transforming the cafeteria, it lends itself to it, we're out there looking with lighting and other kinds of things, so I think it'll be really exciting and a very different experience. And we're getting already, people are buying tables, so a full table, you can buy a table, there are eight people at a table, tickets are $50 each, or you can buy individual tickets, and of the $50, only $22 is paying for the food and entertainment. So every other dollar is going straight to after-school programs, which is not always the case, so I think that's a real positive piece.
Yeah, and this, again, this is the inaugural year for the gala, and I think we, all of us on the committee are really blessed to be able to work with one another on something that is going to have a lasting, positive, powerful impact. And it's just, it's really exciting to be part of something new that is being received so gratefully and with such enthusiasm, so. And thank you Claudia Stevens for all you're doing, she's done so much. And thank you Marissa for coming as well.
Marissa and Sima, who are the owner of-
Cababalicious.
Cababalicious, which is now one of my, added to my list of restaurants to stop at.
Which is located at Lunenburg, which is nice, if you get some Lunenburg folk.
Also, the businesses that are responding, buying tables and-
Gifts for the silent auction, really nice.
Two wonderful Red Sox tickets donated by David Saluza, Slatteries, who, you know, and it's got a club pass with it too, so you can go in early, and there's some great, great gifts coming out there.
I have to say, a lot of folks have been asking for some sort of follow-up to last year's 250th gala ball. I don't know if you went, but it was just an extraordinary affair. So I'm sending people to our school ball.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I don't think we're going to have 250th ball and 252nd, so this sounds like a great place to send people to. So I've got more of a public service announcement, I hate to follow this up, but be the bearer of news, but on Wednesday, April 15th, there is going to be a public hearing for public transit fare increases, so this is sort of important for the public to know, there are some that are going to increase and some that are not. But the public hearing is Wednesday, April 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and it's going to be at the Mark Train Station at 150 Main Street in downtown Pittsburgh. I know there's one happening in Gardner, there might be elsewhere, but this is for the Pittsburgh folks who want to have a voice. Any other news or announcements?
Okay. All right. Well, with all this excitement, this is the third annual now, right?
Yes.
The third, so the Third Annual High School Musical, and tonight we have Tabitha Greenlees, the director, musician, producer, probably a million other things, and Logan Miles, a ninth grader, who will be the Cowardly Lion, and is here to do a rendition from The Wizard of Oz for us tonight.
Was there anybody here for the public comment period? Okay, I just assumed, because I know everybody here, so. Actually, Tabitha.
(Singing) Said a lion, poor neurotic lion, to a miss who listened to him rave. Oh, the Lord made me a lion, but the Lord forgot to make me brave. Then his tail began to curl and wave. Life is sad, believe me, missy, when you're born to be a sissy without the vim and vam. But I could change my habits, never more be scared of rabbits if I only had the nerve. I'm afraid there's no denying, I'm just a dending lion, a fate I don't deserve. But I could show my prowess, be a lion, not a malwist if I only had the nerve.
(Singing) Will you be in your stride? I'm the Tin Man and Dorothy the Corps. You could roar the way you'd never roared before.
And then I'd roar, and roar some more. I would show the dinosaurous, who's king around the forest, a king they better serve. Why, with my eagle bezer, I could be another Caesar if I only had the nerve.
Great. Tabitha, could you give the info, that's going to sell tickets tonight.
It will indeed.
Could you give the information on the nights and ticket prices and everything, please?
Performances are April 16th, Thursday, April 16th at 7:00 PM, Friday, April 17th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, April 18th at 2:00 PM, and 7:30 PM. Tickets are still only $5 for adults, anyone under eight is free. Anyone under eight is free. You can purchase tickets online via the Pittsburgh High School website, and as soon as they are printed, hot off the press, you'll be able to buy them from any cast member or at Pittsburgh High School. If you call, they'll send you directly to my voicemail, and we, I'll get you tickets, it's not a problem, you can pick them up. And you can obviously buy tickets at the door, easy peasy. But four shows, April 16th, 17th, and 18th.
Any news when the posters will be ready for distribution?
As soon as they're hot off the press, as soon as the ink is dry, I will send them to you.
Okay. I've been bothering her about the posters, so.
Yeah.
So we're going to make flyers also, so we're going to make copies of the poster into flyers, and next week, the Monday of that week, we're going to send a flyer home through all the schools to every home, so people will have it on their refrigerator.
Good. Everyone should come, it'll be a fantastic show, we're really concerned.
Great, well, thanks Logan, and looking forward to it, everybody who's helping, transportation. Everybody who's helping, transportation.
Moral support.
Moral support. Okay, thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Very exciting.
Logan, could you just tell us, you were recognized at the state for your work in the comedian, right? Is that the-
That was actually going to school.
Okay.
Yeah, I was recognized for playing the role as a fantasy dad, which was like one of the smallest parts in the play. So yeah, me and Skylar, I wish I remembered his last name.
Robinson.
Robinson.
Okay.
Skylar Robinson, me and him both had been recognized in the state preliminaries for the drama festival/competition.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I wasn't sure, I knew I had seen something. I don't know where we got that update, but congratulations and I'm looking forward to seeing you as the lion.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. So next, this is becoming a tradition also, and that is really making a lot more out of Autism Month than we probably have in the past, and really focusing on this. And Sheila was just reminding me of an email that she sent to me, which was three years old. And she said, "You're probably wondering why I'm sending you an email that's three years old." But it was so I could see the numbers that they were talking about back then, and how drastically the numbers have changed. So she's going to talk about that in her presentation, and she has a short video also. So tonight, we have Sheila Telomiraju, Kat Craven, and Kaylee Pennell. I don't know if you're coming up also to-
Kaylee has an infant at home that's miserably sick, just like Amit who just left.
Yeah.
So it's been like kids being sick, she had to-
Do you want to come sit up here?
This is Kat Craven, she's Amit's teacher for fourth grade, special ed teacher, I want to get it correct.
That's okay.
Go ahead. I'm not sure why it stopped.
So my journey with the public schools began in 2006. That's when my oldest was in the preschool. And slowly, I started, you know, the awareness that I could do the best I can. So around 2008 was when I began connecting with Mr. Rabinell. And I looked back just to see what the numbers were in 2010. That was when I first started sending emails about the numbers, because the CDC announces it every April. Back then, in 2010, it was 1 in 100. Today, it's 1 in 64 to 1 in 46, depending on each state. The numbers are different, and the occurrence is more in boys than it is in girls. And I hear people talking about, they're like, "Oh, it's just better awareness, you know, there's better methodologies to figure this out." And as a parent, I wanted to say that I disagree with that, because when you go to a pediatrician today, from a year old, you see there's milestones that pediatricians are now tracking. And they involve anywhere from gross motor to fine motor to attention deficits. It talks about, is the child making eye contact? Is the child self-stimulatory? Is he playing with the toys, just obsessed with it, ignoring the environment? I mean, it asks literally like questions that trigger the symptoms of autism. Gross motor skills, they talk about, is he able to do the eye-hand coordination, you know, catching the ball, or, you know, paying attention to the surroundings? And is he able to walk? Or, you know, the list is endless. So with that in mind, as I look through the years on how the public schools have supported students on the autism spectrum, it's, I only talk about autism because as a parent, I have a child with autism. I could talk about Down Syndrome, but I feel like as a parent, I do not have that critical input as a parent on what the child would look like, because the functionalities of the child, because in Amit, if I wanted to, you know, look at him as a child, I see that the way he visually processes his information is different. Auditorily, what he hears is completely different to what we hear, even the frequencies that he hears. He has, you know, so many medical issues, you know, it's like hyperplasia where his stomach is inflamed, and you know, there's many other issues that I can just go on and talk about. Those are actual medical issues. So when you talk about including children with special needs, you know, we have the higher functioning ones who just blend in, and you know, there's little odds and ends that you have to fix. But then they're so graspful in nature that they grasp the society around them, they observe the peers, they know the expectations of it. And that also is a spectrum, but that, there's a solution to it, I think, that you can fix it. Then when you come into the mediocre point where there are kids that can communicate, you can somehow, there's like apps that you can get, you know, there's so many different modalities to make them function, functional too. But then when you come to a student profile like Amit's, who's nonverbal and who doesn't, you know, I find it very, you know, I have to watch myself when I say, "Who does not communicate?" Because I don't think I know how to reach my child yet, and I'm trying the best I can. So when you're trying to do something like that for an inclusion setting, in first grade, he began with 15 minutes in Mrs. Piccolamini's class. Second grade, he was in Mrs. Forsman's class, he started going to all the specials. Third grade, he was in Anne Marie Young's class, where he was now beginning to go into reading. The whole time, he was in a substantially separate classroom. Now, in fourth grade, for the first time, I felt like, okay, he can move into general ed classroom, and Kaylee Pennell was his teacher, is his teacher, and Kat is the special ed teacher. So the way it worked was he still needed a lot of sensory breaks. And we were trying to think, do we just want to send him there and just not know how to work with him? So if there's fractions going on, how would my child learn fractions? So that was like, to find the nugget, took us, what, six months, Kat?
Took us a while.
It took us a while to find that. So now what happens is, you know, when there's fractions being taught, he has his own display, I wish I had a picture of it somewhere, but I'll share it sometime through email, that he has his own fractions, like he'll take a pizza, if there's pizza shape, and they cut it and they say, "Well, this is a half." Or a cookie, and they'll say, "This is one-fourth." So that's how the fraction is, the concept of fraction is broken down to his math. They are doing similar things with poetry now. You won't believe, for the first time, I got homework for Amit. And Kat was generous enough to give him 80. After that, he never got anything above 80. It was 20 and 30, but we still have the 80 homework up on the refrigerator. We're so super thrilled with it. For the first time, I felt like I had a peace of mind as a parent. I was thinking that, okay, now I see a path for my child, for education, a purpose, and you know, a direction as a mother, because otherwise, you know, we feel as parents that even when we die, our souls won't rest in peace, because we're wondering what direction our child's life is going to go, how is he going to be supported? So there was this video that I saw from Carly. She's in Canada. She was severely nonverbal, still is nonverbal, and is using the iPad to communicate. But what happened was, no one thought that Carly was good enough for anything. So, I mean, it's the wrong way to put that, but you know, they didn't think that she was capable of reading or writing or anything. So one day, she went up to the computer and typed in "pain," but no one taught her letters. How did she learn how to type? And after that, she's been typing off, and there's like no end to it, she found her voice. But this was an episode in The Doctors Show that I really liked, that I wanted to share with you guys, and then we'll go back to acknowledging Kat. Okay, I can't find the mouse.
It's right on the side, Sheila. On the side, I think.
Oh. Should I put this full screen on?
Can the Hooters girl do your yarn?
Okay. That's not Carly. That's not Carly. How do I skip this?
You can't skip that. Yeah, you're going to take 17 seconds.
It will close in 17 seconds.
Wow.
This works?
So now we understand why YouTube is not normally accessible to-
That's right. That's right.
We purposefully gave access tonight.
Oh, my goodness.
There we go.
Carly, her father Arthur and her daughter Howard. Carly, thank you for coming to the show.
Oh, what did I do?
No, you-
I can only imagine what it's like to be in a prison of silence. Carly, I know your father certainly went through some tough times, because she couldn't communicate with you.
Yeah, we tried everything. We tried prompt, to try to get her mouth to form the words. We tried sign language, but her fine motor skills are too blunt to actually make the signs. We then went on to picture symbols, and I think that was kind of the breakthrough, because all these pictures had words. And we didn't know that she was learning the words, but through the years, she was memorizing and learning the spelling of all the words on all the pictures. And we had a factory going in the base, just producing these picture books and communication books for her.
Now, Howard, you've been Carly's therapist for quite a while, right?
About 10 years now.
So what's a typical day like for you and Carly?
A typical day, actually, now that Carly has been able to find her voice and type, I actually go with her into the school, and she's in a grade 10 typical class. She's actually, this September, will be in a grade 11 gifted classroom.
She's in a gifted classroom.
Full inclusion.
Do you have a seat? You can't sit there, you can sit there after.
My seat just got borrowed.
Yet, you've heard Carly's voice, but it's in there. And ever since Carly's first interaction with the computer, seven years ago, her voice has now been heard all over the country and around the world. Carly has given people advice in real time. I mean, she tweets and posts almost every day now. And the minute she puts something on social media, tens of thousands of people see it, and hundreds of people respond within minutes. So Carly, what did you write here? Autism doesn't define me, I define autism. And within two minutes, you got 123 people liking it and 10 comments. You are so strong, keep it going, says Bernice. Your strength is remarkable, Ms. Fleishman. Her voice has given her a calling in life, and that is to be an advocate, and to create change, and to motivate and move people. And without that voice, she would have had none of that. And I think that that has been the most powerful transformation for us, to see her take this silent voice and use it so powerfully to motivate and move so many tens of thousands of people. Your parents, as well as the entire autism community must be so proud of you. How did she know?
Well, one of the things that we were talking about before the show, Carly, is not only that you're in school, but-
Oh, yeah. You've written an amazing book, and I want to read a little section that just really spoke to me.
The book for everyone at home is called Carly's Voice. This is an excerpt.
An excerpt. Mrs. Carly talking. The way I understand it is, my mind works differently than most people's. When I see something, I take a picture of it, and it stays in my head. That is why I have trouble looking at people's faces. When I look at someone, I take over a thousand images of that person in less than a minute. Now, think of my brain as a digital camera. The more I look at someone's face, the more pictures I take. Because I take so many pictures, my brain, or as in my example, the camera, gets full. I am no longer able to process the pictures or images, and I am forced to turn away. That is why, for most people with autism, you will see their eyes wandering or face moving in a different direction when you're talking to them. You know, and that really just helps me understand why kids behave the way they do, and it's amazing to hear it from Carly's voice.
You know, Carly, you've become much more social in school, but you also have become social-
So that's-
In blogging.
So the one thing that I wanted to tell you guys is, in a minute, she takes thousand pictures in her brain. So just imagine the impact of sensory overload that the person has. And if it's differentiated in each child, that profile looks different. So when we were trying to work as a team, as a parent, it's very important to know how that diagnosis actually manifests in your child. And she really gave me a direction to really think it, and say that, yes, these kids are capable, and you know, she's now in a gifted classroom. I know of two other students that are nonverbal, that are, and one is in San Jose, that's also in an honor roll, you know, that's how well they're performing, given the right supports, and also the parent telling you how, you know, to support the child, because they know the child's in and out of the medical condition. So I just wanted to share that, because I wanted everyone to know that even nonverbal children do have the capability to think, to communicate, you know. People just, you know, educated people say such things that sometimes, I went to a doctor's office, and he goes, "Oh, yeah, so your son's autistic?" And I had to look at him, and I said, "My son has autism." So I, you know, the child is there, he listens to it, and you know, so we have developed a culture in our team to not talk anything about him in front of him. So there are things that we're learning as a team, and I have to tell you, I've never found a right balance in my team members this year like ever before. I mean, there's an etiquette for difficult conversations that we go through, and we survive that. And you know, the right team blend, the commitment, and the, you know, the dedication that they have, the fact that Kat's on maternity leave, and she came here, shows you how much is committed to working with Amit. And I just wanted, two reasons why I always come to talk about autism is, one, to show you how hard the child works, and how hard the teachers also work to make the experience for the child successful. So thank you for giving me the time, and I was wondering if, oh, I am a little behind this year, actually, with Governor Baker moving in and a transition. The governor's citations will be coming in a couple of weeks, so, but I have the mayor's citation, so I was wondering if the mayor or Mr. Rabinell can give it to Kat.
Wow. And there's one from Kaylee, too.
Kaylee, too, yes. Kaylee, yes. And I have that, would you like me to give you?
No, it says the same thing, so it's a different name. So this is an official citation from me, and there's going to be a teacher one from the governor. "Be hereby known to all that the city of Pittsburgh hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Kat Craven and Kaylee as well, in recognition of a strong commitment and dedication towards working with children on the autism spectrum." So the entire citizenry extends our very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and it's given this sixth day of April, 2015, by Lisa A. Wong.
Kat. Welcome, Miss Yen.
Well, it's a work of art, and you've done immensely well.
Kat, if you want to just turn around with the mayor, and she's going to take your picture there.
Okay, we're sort of on-
Yes.
I'll pretend I'm getting it to you there.
All right, good.
Okay. Would you look at me, Kat? Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Kat. Wonderful.
Kat, you have a new baby. She's a baby girl.
13 days old.
You're here tonight. That's dedication.
Wow.
Couple of quick announcements. Today is also our paraprofessional appreciation day. I do want to, I just wanted to clear a little confusion. I know the principals and everyone, administrators, they already acknowledge paraprofessionals. This is from a parent perspective, like as a special education parent advisory council, that we thank them for all their commitments, because the things that they do to work with children on the spectrum, words can't describe. So it is truly their day. And also, on April 9th, we have our autism awareness gathering at Long's Joe. I started off very small with Mr. Shalifa at a school council meeting, and he blew it like, you know, to the wholeheartedly. He has made it like a huge, you know, pledge and, you know, gathering and understanding and acceptance, so kudos to him too, so for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rowan?
Yep.
Come up and try to follow that.
The singing!
Yeah.
I've got compliance for you.
You're going to have to be more, I'm going to have to be more careful about the order of things next time.
Yeah. That's okay.
But when facing the CPR, you sometimes feel like a cowardly lion, right?
Yes.
You can pull mine out if it's not going to-
Well, you're doing it, can I just ask, how's it going with, so you have a substitute candidate, right? So how does that work? How is that?
Well, she, you know, she's, like I said, it's a teamwork, and she's not started, so she needs help, because she's never seen this new profile like Amit's. So Kaylee helps her out a lot, and also the paraprofessionals that work with Amit help her a lot.
It's a real team, like it's really-
I mean, the team really connects. I mean, if there's one thing that they see wrong, they're meeting right away, says, "Hey, let's see what we can tweak." This is all like a team initiative. I never drive anything, I'm just like, wow, they're just doing it all by themselves. So it's like a right chemistry between them this year. Yeah, clicks, yeah.
Communication, that's the key. So good evening, everybody. I am here tonight to present to you kind of an update on the compliance review, where we're at, because we are in the middle of a progress reporting cycle. Our one-year mark will be up at the end of August, so we are actually looking very good to meet all the requirements of our last compliance review, where we had some partially implemented areas. Right now, what has been occurring is, we've been training across the district in every single school. Our student program support administrators as a team has developed a professional development, and then- and then they implement that at their individual buildings. And those are areas to refresh on current state and federal regulations around timelines, reviewing progress reports, making sure, for example, there is a checklist that needs to be reviewed at every IEP meeting for a child that's diagnosed with autism. So there's certain documents that are required when running team meetings or three-year reevaluations or initial processes, and all those have been revamped, reintroduced, and retrained across the district. We submitted that, all the agendas, with all of the PowerPoints to the state, and that has been approved. So where we're at with that particular piece right now is, so by this Friday, I'm in the process right now of completing a summary document for 30 internal roof files that we, as a district, have been reviewing. So they, the state chooses how many they want to see, and they chose 30. So we have to randomly select a certain type, which means we have some that will be for IEPs that are fully included students, some that are in substantially separate classrooms, some out-of-district files. And we have an internal review system that we have to look at. We have a checklist that we designed that goes through all the areas, such as, did the annual review run on time? Were all the team members present? Was the parent present? Were they properly notified? Was the IEP out on time? So there's a whole, there's two pages of questions that you have to review and look at. We collect them at central office, and then we go back and kind of do a double check just to make sure no one's, you know, we kind of want to keep up with each other and make sure no one's missing anything or kind of giving wrong information. So I'm in the process of summarizing all 30 of those documents right now and taking a look at where are we at today? After the training and after everything else has been implemented, where are those 30 random documents sitting at this point? So I won't have that information until the end of the week, but right now, it is looking fairly good, so. The other area of citation was the translation of documents. We are required, for any parent that speaks a second language, to have at least the IEP translated. And we were in violation of that, not only under special education, but under civil rights for other documentations, such as student handbooks. We have developed a new procedure around requesting translations through central office, through the ELL director, Bonnie Bear Seemack. And there's also a document that comes up to special education, because some of the documents, they're, they kind of run a little bit differently. So if you are looking at the building level of having a new event occur in your building and you're going to post that out to all the parents and send it out as a handout, it technically should be translated. And that would go through Bonnie's office, and there's a form that principals would fill out, or if you need someone to come to a family event at your school and need a translator there, then you would fill out that form and make that request. Then there's a form that comes to special education for the translation of IEPs, all the testing that needs to be translated. And then we kind of funnel through all of that and get those translated out of our department. So now we have a more formal process, and we can really track building by building what schools are requesting either oral or written translations. So by April 10th, again, this Friday, we need to provide some evidence around that some IEPs have been translated. We also need to lay out a budget page of how we're going to fund that as well. And then the last one, so we're down to only three areas really at this point, is facilities and classrooms. We were sighted in two classroom areas, one at South Street for the Pathways Program in grade one and two, because they really are in a location in the building that is far separate from the general ed education students who are in grade one and two. And at McKay. And the McKay is in the partition room in the back of the library, and really what they want to see is a very set classroom. So we've been in talks with both McKay and the college, because that building belongs to the college, and coming up with some solutions around that particular space. And again, at South Street. Now, with all the snow days and then Park coming up, we really had tried to talk to the principals about, could we possibly move over April vacation? But that's not going to happen because we're in session. And so my last response was to ask if we could hold off moving classrooms till the end of the school year because it's so disruptive. And especially when you're looking at a classroom, so the Pathways Classroom at South Street would be highly disruptive. And so, and that might require two or three classrooms to move to get the right classroom fits. So they have accepted our response that we can move the classrooms over this course of the summer. What they want by the end of the school year is a detailed map of exactly where in the building we're going to be moving that, and they'll come for their onsite visit sometime in July, just to do a visual check that we've moved the classrooms. So that's where we're at for the compliance review. We only have a couple more areas, and like I said, I will be responding with the 30 documents. And so I might get some feedback on that, that there might be some additional requirements. This is kind of an ongoing back and forth now until August, till our year time is up. But this, so far, are the three areas that we continue to work on right now. The other piece you have, while I was sitting here this evening, is in your documentation because I think I wanted you all to be aware, as we're going through compliance and we're discussing different
I can do that later, so just go ahead.
Well, I have another
Oh, do you have a slide?
Yep. So I wanted to show you, because I think this is great data for you to be aware of, is, and you have this in your packet. It looks like this. It's very, written very small. So right now, what you're looking at is, these are the students that have moved into Pittsburgh Public Schools to date. So you have on your sheet, I did take out all the added districts, because I put them on a separate sheet, but we have about 120 students that moved in with special education services into Pittsburgh Public Schools since the start of the school year. And so when we're looking at, you know, for example, this year, I had to make a request to add an additional teacher to McKay to meet the needs. And if you look on the sheet, McKay right in here on the first page. So when you look at special ed placement, which is the second column, and you see that 40 number, that 40 is a substantially separate classroom. So that's how many students we've had move in since the beginning of the year that require us to provide a substantially separate classroom for students at McKay, and that would be the Guided Learning Program. Those tend to be, when I look at this chart, what pops out at me are the amount of high need students that are moving in. I've given you on the back page a key to these numbers. So 40 really is the special education, it's a substantially separate classroom. And then next to it is a level of need. So anything from a moderate to a high level is a lot of services. It's anywhere from six to 18 hours' worth of service up to a substantially separate classroom. And then I also added in, so you can see students that moved into the district with paraprofessionals already in their IEP. And when they move into us, we have to provide those services. So this impacts a lot of the work that we do every single day when we're getting this level of student need move in. I did also provide you with the added district data to date, so you can see who's, how many kids have moved in and how many kids we placed out at this point in the school year. And about this time is about the time, other than the move-ins, that our district placement tends to slow down. We have a pretty good idea about what students might, or teams are looking at at a district placement. We're trying some behavioral management techniques. We might be adding additional services in, but I would have a pretty good idea at this point of any students that might be leaving our schools to go to add a district between now and the end of the school year. Any questions on that data?
What's SLD?
It's a learning disability.
How many are part of the autism?
Out of the South Street?
How many for the autism?
So if you are to look at the South Street data, we've had six kids move into the substantially separate classroom at South Street, which is the Pathways Program.
That means they've moved to Pittsburgh.
And they have entered
From these towns.
Yes.
Yes.
They're not paying us to come here. We're paying now the full to have them here.
Well, we're paying for their services. Yep.
That's what I mean, where if they were living in the other town, they would be paying the services.
Well, these are
Well, these are in-district students. So students
The last page is out of district.
Correct.
So these are families who live here in Pittsburgh.
But they moved from these
They moved from those towns.
They moved from these towns.
And we added that because we went over like how much information to give you tonight. And I thought it was interesting for you to see the variety of places that students come from, you know, as they move here.
But this sometimes affects some of the decision-making over the course of just one single school year. So even though I may have thought at the beginning of the school year about expanding a certain type of program, the student need moving in may limit that because I may have to now direct that support to another area we hadn't anticipated, like, for example, the Guided Learning Program. We had to put an additional teacher over there because the classroom in grade three, four was up to 17 students. So we were violating the law, there can only be 12 students in the classroom, and so we had to hire another teacher to support that need. And that's only due to students moving into the district.
And you've heard this every year, but this is one of the pieces of the budget puzzle that is very difficult to explain, and yet is totally arbitrary. And you can tell how arbitrary it is when you look at the, all the different towns that people come from. So if they move here to Pittsburgh from any of these towns, we have to look at their IEP. Then you have to consider if they're going into a classroom that's already at the maximum. If they are, and if there are a number of them, then we would have to add an additional teacher, find an additional room. And if they come with their ed plan saying they need a teacher assistant, then we would have to put in a teacher assistant. And none of that would be budgeted already. So we would have to find additional funding within the school budget and shift funding around to try to budget that. And those would be the easy ones. Some of the more difficult ones would be the outside placements. You know, we were discussing an outside placement today that was $280,000. So it's, so one of the things we put into place two years ago is that Rowan and Bob and Melissa in the finance office meet every two weeks. Melissa tracks the financial piece of special education. Rowan tracks the actual human element of it, who are the folks and what do they need? And then Bob looks for, how is this going to affect the budget as we move through the year? But, you know, my approach has been, I don't want to not know. I want to know. And I want to know ahead of time, enough ahead of time, so that if we have to make adjustments in the budget, we can make those in time to balance our budget.
And so what happens right now with our added districts is, and if you look on the added district piece, all the CAPS or FLAC and even the Hartwell, those tuitions are automatically picked up by the district. Those are what we call collaborative-level tuitions. So the way the state law or regulation is, is the district that the parent moves into, the district automatically picks that tuition up. From a private, from, so above a private, collaborative is a private school. And we would pick up the tuition at the end of the fiscal year if they moved in prior to April 1st. So we're over that hump, thank goodness, because what would happen now is if we have a student move in, right now, we'd have another year buffer where we would not pay that tuition, but we'd pick it up in the 2017 school year, fiscal year.
And that's fairly new. That's only the last few years?
The move-in law has been around for a while. Part of the pieces now, I think a lot of special education directors are discussing, is why the move-in law doesn't apply to collaboratives. And prior to, I think the last few years, collaboratives really were a very reasonable rate for school districts to make choices with. But now the tuitions are up where, anywhere between $50,000 to $60,000 a year per child, where really, if you have 10 move-ins, that really can affect your budget in a big way. So there is some advocacy out there about putting collaboratives under the move-in law, at least to give a buffer to school districts to better prepare financially for added district placements.
Where would that put a collaborative? You know, I'm involved with CAPS.
Yep. Well, then, they would just be being paid by another district.
I was going to say, because like a CAPS or FLAC couldn't keep, you know, couldn't keep paying, you know, because
Well, like, for example, if we have a student move in from Boston with a collaborative IEP right now, we make the referral to CAPS or FLAC and they go there and we pay the tuition. It would be the same as private school. Boston would continue to pay that rate to CAPS until the end of the school year.
Do we have a high population that leaves the district and goes to other districts? Or is it they just always coming in, they're never
No, it goes back and forth.
Now, there are no name, there's nobody at Pittsburgh High?
So Pittsburgh High School does their own enrollment. So I don't have that data. I have to, that's separate, because we keep this data right in our office with the enrollment department. So I'd have to capture that data with Nancy Orsini. I haven't had a chance to yet.
I have a few questions on this. So do you know what percent of new students this makes up? Like, is this 80% of our, because we have 80% high needs. Is that consistent, or is this bigger than that or less than that? Or do you know? I know it's not your
Yeah. I'd have to look at the overall district move-ins, which I can do. I can ask your enrollment department to get that data. So then you can look at how many students have moved in in total.
Yeah, and what trends we might be looking at. I mean, I think if there's one fight that has to be made at the funding and state level, it's about high-needs populations. And it's so unfair to everybody involved, right? To the kids who need the services
Well, it's that threshold between a per pupil expenditure
Right, right.
And us reaching that circuit breaker threshold, which right now, which is $41,000. So you have, you have almost a $20,000 gap that you are now having to fiscally pick up for, for even in-district services.
So that has to be our, that has to be our battle. I mean, it has to be for all of the cities that are really seeing this. And I know at the state level, whatever
Trying. At the state level, we've been trying for years.
Yep.
In special education and gifted and any of those things that were part of the law, none of them were funded 100%. So this is just one more of those things that was put in. I want to say, though, I think the order was good, the way we had things tonight, because you can see how easily this just becomes a sheet of paper with a bunch of figures on it and numbers on it. But I think the fact that we had Sheila there and Amit, you know, talking about that these are, these are students, and they're either in our district or they're coming to our district, and what you heard was, we do a really good job of trying to understand what their needs are and work with them. And then this part here is paper and finance. And I think that it's really sometimes hard to keep, to remember that.
Could I follow up on that, then? You know, when I'm looking, so 28 new kids at Rhinegold. I mean, South Street's right there with 22. But you'll go back, and it's not that this is not a lot of kids. I'm not saying it's not, but I don't under, so help me with the numbers and the disparity. Here's my big concern. I really do believe that Rhinegold needs some serious focus. I feel like the emotional needs of the kids at Rhinegold
So I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's the last slide as well, in kind of comparing all the data. The last slide you have is our staffing piece. And I understand that And I understand that Reinhold struggles with sometimes the emotional impairment population they have in their building, but they're not the only building that struggles. So I think when you look at the overall data, this is what I'm talking about, when we have this amount of move-ins and we need support across the district, it's not just at one building. And those are the pieces that we look at Cabinet and my administrative department looks at all the time. And so when you look at it just as a numbers game here, what you have in the last piece, we have to very, in a very systematic way, look at numbers and say, what's the total population of students? How many students are in the building with, with special education needs? How many teachers do we have assigned there? What type of substantially separate classroom, if any, are in the building? What kind of supports is it taking to manage that particular piece? And I've broken it all the way down because, you know, pupil personnel also looks at the guidance and social adjustment and clinical interventionists, as well as a paraprofessional piece. And right now, there is a full-time clinical interventionist in that building, along with two guidance counselors. The piece that I have to honestly say, I'm getting more feedback from principals on is where you see the .5 for clinical interventionists, where we're just talking about the social emotional needs. This .5 is one person across four buildings who has a caseload of 60 students that she's servicing right now.
60.
60.
How's that happening?
These are students that are not in a substantially separate classroom, but are being diagnosed with some sort of emotional piece into an IEP service. And this is only IEP service, so they're getting some level of counseling support needs at these buildings. And so my biggest concern is with that right now and finding support to kind of level those out into maybe two positions if I could. If I can't, then how do, how do you work with guidance and social adjustment counselors to help assist with some of that work?
What, what about the nature of the issue too? I mean, I think when you're looking at a lot of emotional issues, there's just a lot, and I think if you cross that with, you know, some of the other data that we got tonight about people leaving the district. I mean, I think you're, you've got some classrooms that are having some really heavy outbursts and, and there's no social adjustment counselor at that school. So how?
No, but there is a, so our clinical interventionist is a licensed social worker.
Yep. So, right. And I, and I see that that's the full-time position there. I mean, how big is too big with certain populations, right? Like, is it, and I understand the economics of it, obviously, but I guess I'm just wondering health of schools, like, I mean, and just the climate of schools and.
Well, in this, I have to say, in all honesty, it's not solely a special education issue. I mean, our, some of our student population of students are coming in with a history of trauma and they don't even qualify for special education. It doesn't mean they have a disability. It's a health issue that needs to be addressed, honestly, across the whole district. We need to examine it as a whole administrative population about how we're going to manage a lot of these students who are coming in ill-prepared for school because of a lot of other things going on in their lives. And help all the other students that are in that classroom learn at the same time because that's primarily what we hear a lot. And I do hear that feedback from other families that are concerned about having students in their classroom with other particular students. Now, my, my initial instinct as a special ed administrator is to say, all of our kids have a right to be in that classroom. It's our job to help manage that as best as we can because we may have one child that has an outburst, but that doesn't mean that he should not access that particular curriculum in that classroom. He has every right to be there and we have to learn how to support him in that process. And sometimes that support takes time and it takes patience because it's behavior intervention plans that could take weeks to properly implement and really work with the child around that. But I agree, it's, it's a whole district issue and not solely just a special education issue.
It's not just a district issue. And I've talked about that here before. It's a statewide issue. And Paula has been at the same meetings that I have been in. And, and that's why I don't want to paint a picture that this is a Fitchburg district issue.
No, no.
Because this is an issue in districts across the state. We're a public education. Public education means that every student has a right to the maximum education we can provide them, given whatever their disability is. And in doing that, we're, if we had the money, if we were funded to the level that we should be by the state, we would be able to provide all of the supports, all of the interventions for every single child. But as you said earlier, we have not been funded at that level. We are really terribly funded in terms of the needs of special education and it lays on the backs of the local district. So the law forces us, and rightfully so, to provide that education, but it does not provide the resources. So in a situation like this, you know, you look at this graph and say, right, we could probably look at three or four more positions. We're going to be in a budget situation where we're going to be cutting positions. We're not going to be adding positions. So if there's anything that can be done, it's not at the local school level, it's not at the classroom level, it's at the state level. Requiring the state to fund the kind of education that they hold us to, and you heard in her presentation for the CPR, that they'll come here and say, we don't like this room, this room is not sufficient. And if it means you have to move four other people out of their rooms and move to that room, and that's an additional cost to you, you will do it because we're telling you it has to be done. So it's really a balance of the program, you know, the response and the funding for it. And, you know, it's constantly a rob Peter to pay Paul. But I, you know, as, as probably new and interesting as this data is, these data are, I really felt it was important for everybody here to see these data, that, that this is the reality that the special. Just listening to Rowan today at Cabinet, to some of the things that had already happened by nine o'clock in the morning in terms of adjustments that had to be made in classrooms with teachers, you know, when someone is out on maternity leave and you've created a team of people that are working with Amit or working with another student, someone has to come in and resolve that situation to prepare the team to meet the needs of that child till that teacher is able to return. And that's why I said, I think it was a good presentation to have that ahead of this. That's the real flesh and blood of this activity. And now we're talking about the programs, the accountability, and then in the end, the finance. Because the accountability comes with no additional funding whatsoever.
Can I make a suggestion that we move this issue to the student support group?
Yeah.
That we all do a little bit of research. So we'll put that on the next agenda. I can do some research from my end about what's going on politically at the state level. I think, you know, Andre, Paula, you can find out what the superintendents are doing, what's going on in terms of the administration level. And we'll craft kind of our message around that, what we want to advocate for.
Well, and I heard a request to bring the, let's bring the incoming data, the new student data.
I would love to know what percent.
So that then we can create something and get a sense of the percentages. So if there's.
I'm sure I can get that.
Right, a context. So if there's other things that, if you're just getting this tonight, you haven't seen this before, but if there are other things that you think about, send it to Rowan or myself and you'll bring that to the student support meeting.
Could I just ask how you place people? Like, how do you make that decision? It's going to go Long Joe, they're going to go Memorial, they're going to, so, and you can answer that some other time.
Well, I can give you the quick answer on that. So unless the child requires a substantially separate classroom, enrollment makes that decision based on the data for the school. So unless a child comes in with an IEP for a substantially separate classroom at the elementary level for an emotional impairment, then they would be selected by us to, or recommended by us to go to Reinhold because that's the only program at the elementary level that we have. But if they move in with a partial or inclusion IEP, then we say, this is a partial inclusion IEP for fourth grade. They could go to any one of the four elementary schools. And at that point, enrollment makes the decision based on the numbers and the class sizes. And then they do the placement based on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, if anybody is interested, Dr. McCall would come in and talk about the CAPS collaborative and answer questions. Dr. McCall does that to a lot of the smaller, smaller towns. We're fortunate that we have Rowan here and she's very familiar with all the CAPS and FLAC program. A lot of times, we don't talk about, we have FLAC on Winusnuck Road, the building down there. And going back as a principal, I am so happy, I was so glad that we had a CAPS or a FLAC because some of these programs might have five or six students with a teacher and two aides in the class and it can be pretty disruptive. So as a principal, it's kind of like, oh my God, can we get a placement for this child? You know? And we try and keep them in, but some of them be so disruptive, it can be months of disturbing the classroom and slowing down education. I'm sure Dr. Murphy too would be willing to come in from FLAC if, if people would be interested.
Enrollment challenge.
[laughing].
Speaking of which, and this is a different kind of enrollment challenge. So as we've been looking at the, the budget, you've heard me say already that this is going to be a deficit budget. That we're going to have a hard time looking at anything additional because we're already in a shortfall. We're still looking at the numbers now, but the shortfall is still around $1 million. And we're, because we have received a little under $300,000, some of you were at the budget subcommittee meeting. We've received a little bit under $300,000 from the state for schools. And now we're looking at some additional funding from the city, which is bringing us to a total of $50,200,000, which is far short than what we would need. So when I come before you and give you a first budget presentation, I am going to show you what the cost would have been to do all the things we should be doing. And it's somewhere like an additional $3.8 million. Well, we only have under $1 million in revenue coming in. So it, while we wanted to do that exercise because it was really important to see what are the things we need, it didn't make any sense to spend a whole lot of time trying to figure out how to put a lot of new things in when we know we were going to have to actually cut from our budget to balance the budget this year. So one of the pieces, the side pieces to this is the enrollment bubble. So there is, the senior class right now, and I have a bigger presentation that I'll use for the budget presentation, the senior class right now is 235 students. The freshman, this year's freshman class is 306. This year's grade five is 357. Next year's grade five is 452. So we're talking about a, a population increase moving into middle school of about 100 students. Now, the, the image that I used in the subcommittee is the boa constrictors swallowing the frog. And they swallow one frog and as it moves through, there's this bubble that moves through. And that would be fine if you had that one year of bump. We have, we've got four more years of bump coming up behind us. So today's grade three is 416, new 425, 435, look at kindergarten, 445. There was a time not too long ago, our kindergartens were under 400, sometimes around 380. We're now looking at a kindergarten of 445. So the issue here is not just about space, but it's about what kind of space. Because what we have happening is these students are moving into our middle schools. So if the elementary stays stable, we have all the rooms we need at the elementary to maintain this 400, 430, 440. But right now, we don't have that at the middle school level because we haven't had this number of students at the middle school. So you've got this coming year of about an extra 100 students coming into fifth grade, but the following year, so as that 100 starts to move through the middle school, there's another 100 coming in right behind them. Right now, the, this is the number of students in all of our middle schools. And our schools, our middle schools right now are at capacity. Now, at capacity means that there still might be an art teacher in a classroom, in an art room, there still might be music in a music room and all of that. So not at capacity, overcapacity would be, those people are all taken out of their rooms and they're all trying to teach classroom to classroom. That's not where we're at, but everything is in capacity right now. So there are a lot of wild cards in this scenario. First of all, the McKay Arts Academy scenario is, is a, an arrangement we have with Fitchburg State University for a certain amount of money in exchange for a certain amount of classrooms. So there's really no opportunity for expansion there under the present condition. The second one is Long Joe. And at Long Joe Middle School, there is some space that we're still working on. Not all of that space at the Long Joe Middle School can be maximized right now, either because of the location of it or because of specific things about the space. So that's an issue that I'm going to have to deal with. And then at Memorial, this place is filled to the brim. Classroom size is, you know, 28, 29, 30. We're using every corner, but we have, you know, some computer labs. If we continue to expand and not come up with another solution, all of those additional rooms would have to be taken away just to provide classroom space. So take a deep breath because I'm not asking you to do anything this year about this. So what I'll be talking about in the budget presentation is that my plan is to solve this problem short-term for this year, using whatever space we can find at Memorial and Long Joe. So right now, but don't hold me, this could change tomorrow, right now, I'm looking at possibly two classrooms at Long Joe and one classroom here. And that will get us to a short-term solution because here we are in April, there is no time for a long-term solution. So what we'll be talking about over the coming year is, how do we want to address this space solution over the coming year? Because we have to come up with a solution that has at least a four-year plan. So what we'll be doing is examining options based on student impact. So you see, that's the first thing. What impact is whatever we do going to have on student learning? And that's why I said, we're looking at classroom space right now at the two middle schools. I'll be looking through whatever we do, what impact is it going to have on the whole school community? The cost of it? And then is it feasible? And then in preparing for this first year of transition, we're going to look at the facility, if there are things, we might have to make some changes, some small facility changes at either of those locations that we would do ourselves. And then are there staff? We're going to need three additional staff members to prepare for that incoming fifth grade. So that's not an option. I don't have an option to not put those staff members in because we need that. And then finally, what resources are they going to need? If we're adding additional middle school students, we have to make sure that we have the right resources to meet their needs.
How many, how many eighth graders are moving on?
Maybe three.
High threes.
300s, 380.
Yeah. It's a high threes, almost 390.
Okay. So this year with 357 moving in to the middle school, should.
450 are moving into the.
450 are moving in. Another 100 students.
That's grade five. Okay, yep.
So that, those grades, those grades in the 300s and the 350s are done.
Yep.
Everything now.
357 in grade five be going to grade six.
Right.
So that, what you're losing any spoons there, that you're going to be.
There's no space. It's not, we're not freeing up space on the other end. That's the problem. So the, the second thing, and this will be part of what we'll be looking at this coming year for the following year, is what, what our facilities are, what our staff needs are going to be and what the resources are going to be. So that's going to be a longer conversation that will involve a lot, a lot more information. We are, we are putting an RFP out, we pretty much, it's pretty close to finish today, right? We are, we are putting an RFP out, we pretty much, it's pretty close to finish today, right? Went back to purchasing today to go out on the street, to hire somebody to come in and do a full audit, demographic audit of our student population, what are the trends, what would be our needs, all of that kind of stuff, so that we're working with real numbers and real projections.
Four years ago, we had like a decade-long trend of declining enrollment. So it's amazing how quickly it changes.
Yeah, we were, we were down around 4,800, around, that's where we were.
About 5,200 now.
And today, we were at, the, the report today was 5,237, something like that. So it, so each one of, but that's also, there's good and bad. Last year, we had 57 additional students, or 63. So we had over $1 million in additional Chapter 70. This past year, we had nine. So we had under 300. So if these students, and now I looked at it, and it was around 51 right now, if those students stay with us till October 1 of next year, that would be what our following year's Chapter 70 would be based on.
But talking about sped costs, who knows what the needs are, so we could have...
We don't know. We don't know.
So assuming a long-term solution means a capital thing, how quickly can we get something going, or is that what we're gonna be figuring out?
Well, we've been, we've been setting the stage for whatever, for a lot of different options. And some of those options required steps to be taken right now. And those steps were the MSBA, you know, the SOIs.
Statements of interest.
Statements of interest. So what we have done, and Bob has gone to the city council, and we've gone, and we've come here, is we have to get ourselves in the pipeline. So what we've done is due diligence of getting ourselves in the MSBA pipeline, so that once we get this study, once we talk from here about what we'd like to do, we have a plan in place to say, here's the plan that we wanna do.
What's the actual capacity of Long Joe and Memorial? Like total bodies, including teachers?
Probably would, not sure exactly.
I don't know. Do we know those numbers? Like, I mean, were we approaching those numbers?
Well, first of all, you can't go by, one thing you can't do is you can't go by the old blueprints when the school was built, because there were no special education classes. There were no, I mean, there are lists and lists of things that didn't exist in schools that now we have to do. There were no computer labs. There were no ally coaches that needed a room to do that. So when you just take the classroom space and square footage, they don't often match. And also, and you know from a new high school, the high school requirements today in terms of square footage are different than they were in the past.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question about that. So how much availability, do teachers all have their own room, and if they have a prep, do they get to stay in their room?
Right now, yes. Right now...
I mean, that's the ideal, but...
Yeah, right now, at both, at both Long Joe and Memorial, I'm not aware of any teacher who shares a room and has to leave, which is what...
Right. I mean, that's not a great, that's not great for kids, it's not great for teachers.
And, you know, I've already talked to both principals, and, you know, their goal is, over the next three weeks, to identify where the space would be for these three additional classrooms.
It's odd, because in some of the schools, such as Memorial and Rheingold and Crocker, spaces that originally used for something else have already been cannibalized and are used for classrooms. And...
So it's, it's a, it's a good thing, our enrollment is up. It's a bad thing, our enrollment is up.
And I think just to kind of connect the dots from Rowan's presentation earlier about CPR, and one of the goals of this long-range strategic facilities plan is to have people who are primarily educators come in and say, this is the type of spaces that you should have, and have that be a part of the data that influences the next phase, the MSBA and the different options. So that's kind of how it all ties together.
Any other questions on that? You'll hear more about it, but the main message that I wanted to give you is, right now, we're gonna solve the short-term problem with existing space. So it's not, we're not looking at other solutions or anything right now, we're looking at in-house to solve that one-year problem. And then we've got a plan in place, both through MSBA, through this survey that we're gonna do of our facilities and our enrollment, to have some good data so that we can have a plan that's a long-term plan.
And what's good about the four-year plan is that that's fiscal year 19, and our debt service opens up. Not unlimited, but there is some room to do something.
So next on the agenda is our calendar. You received it in your packet, should have. We share the calendar with the Teachers Association. I'm not finding my copy, I'm hoping it's in your packet.
We have it, yeah.
You have it? Okay.
Here, do you want to?
Okay, thank you.
I was curious to ask about, do you have Good Friday back on the calendar for next year, how that went attendance-wise?
Um...
Because, I mean, if we wanna just...
I did, I checked the attendance today, and I only got the numbers, but like your question, I didn't get the percentage. So I haven't had a chance to look at the percentage, I just got how many students were absent from each school. My sense is, and we did talk, I asked at Cabinet this morning, our sense was that the day went pretty, fairly well.
Yeah.
Because I was concerned that so many people were out. So I did send an email out to all of the principals today to just get some feedback if there were some glitches. They now know, they already know who's going to be absent during April vacation. So they've received the list of who's going to be absent. So what I said in my email was, if you remember, one of the things I said was, one of the reasons for this is to gain, you know, with Elizabeth Moison, as much academic time that we could at this time. So in my email, I said, let's just all remind ourselves of the purpose of this. So given the fact that there's gonna be different staff members out, what I asked them to do is look at the staff that you have, and then as, either by classroom, by grade level, or by your school, look at what are your greatest academic needs for that group of students? What do you need to do? And start now to create a plan on what you're, what we're gonna do on those three days, so that we maximize the academic experience for those students during those three days.
Well, and, because in that spirit of adding more days, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the committee feels, but I'd be open to, next year, looking at Good Friday proactively as a school day. I don't know if that would be a minefield, but if it wasn't a minefield this year. Just anticipating the, I don't know if the climate's gonna change for the better next year, you know? But if people would rather wait and cross that bridge later, but...
Well, I'm open to either, either approach. Right now, you have, we have our last day is on the 13th, June 13th. If there's no snow, if there's five days of snow, we're at the 20th.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate Good Friday at this point in time, looking at it, getting out on the 13th of June, there's plenty of time. We'd have to have several snow days to bring us up into the, next to the last week of school.
Are there additional costs related to holiday pay for other employees, staff, custodial cafeteria?
No.
That's not...
Because it balances out its so many days, whether it's, you know, Good Friday or another day of the year.
Any movement on doing one vacation? I agree that that needs to be a larger, multi-district thing, I don't know if the, because the sun is out again, people are...
The state is all over the place. I've seen some of the surveys, and they're, as adamant as there are some districts that want to eliminate it, there are other districts that say, you know, no way. So I, in my tenure as a superintendent, I don't expect to see any change statewide. And, and I just know from talking to other districts, to go out on that limb by yourself is very precarious to say.
Oh, no, I get that. I get that, because the implications...
But I knew there had been a lot of, there was a lot of talk about it, but when the talk hit the, you know, are we gonna do this or not, everyone's backed away from it.
Enough snow has melted, people forget.
Right, right, right.
Is, is March 9, is that a half-day? Should that be an H?
Yes.
Yes, all the, all the half-days are in pink.
Yes, but they're all marked with an H.
Oh, she didn't put the H.
Yeah.
Wow, you're good.
Oh, lucky.
Okay, so yes.
The complaints that I got this past year were that winter vacation was too long. I guess it was a full two weeks, and it was just how the holidays fell. So this is much, much, much better.
We're back to, we're back to a regular week's vacation, basically.
I still think it was a good decision to do the two weeks, because people bail and take the time anyway, and you lose data, you lose attendance data. But, so I think it was a good call last year. I know, I got, I got parent feedback, too, saying, that was too long, so, but I thought it was smart.
If we come up with a calendar that won't have anyone finding something they don't like, we should market it, we should pay the sped bill with it. So are people okay with, we, we'll keep that in mind, Matt, I think we did it this year, so I think people know it's on...
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility, and we can make that available, and maybe just, you know, next year, look at it. We've got some donations at Goodrich, additional furnishings. And these are all from Holy Cross. You approved a batch of this stuff one time, so now we have 40 additional chairs from Holy Cross. The grants, 21st Century Learning Grant, we've submitted, that's the one I mentioned, at the student support. We're only allowed to submit one grant. So, yeah.
What school will that be for?
It, it's for Memorial. It was Memorial and McKay, who actually McKay had started a process of applying, but the 21st Century Grants are not available to schools who are Level 1.
Oh.
So we're down to one 21st Century Grant.
You get a benefit.
So that's, that's gone through.
Well...
Hey, take it out of ya. Yep, we've submitted that, and then the DSAC grant for 156, 134, we will be accepting. School choice expenditure... Do you have that? I don't have the paper for school choice. So there might not be any paper with it?
Is that the video editing software?
It's the video editing software.
It's on the second page.
Yep, last page, yep.
Okay, so the school choice, oh, it's for the, the software, that's for the software that's used with our athletes. And that's for $1,600. And then the, the work permit, second reading, that's out of policy, was that out of policy committee?
Yeah.
I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know if there's anything you wanna say about it.
No, we're just, just updating the work permit. It's pretty much the same, just wanted to update it with the, you know, the law.
Okay.
It's the dating.
All right, that's it.
Nothing's really changed.
I have a quick...
Go ahead, Matt.
I just had a quick 21st Century question. Camp Sun, is that a 21st Century?
Yes, it is.
Is that happening this year, or is that...
Yes, it is.
Oh, good.
We have a 21st Century Grant at Crocker and Long Joe, and technically, those two schools, students from those two schools have first dibs on seats, and then it can be open to students from the other schools in the district. So it's a four-week program, the month of July, and part of the requirement for 21st Century Grants is that you fund 480, 464, 482, whatever the number is, hours. And 64 of those hours are in the summer, so... What are the steps to, for the signage up at Pittsburgh High for...
You have to approve it, and then we'll start moving forward, talking to Officer McNamara and the signs, and get that going.
Could I ask, who uses the video editing software in the FBI department? Is that just one particular team? Is that...
Everybody, including the students.
So what do they do with that?
They actually have folks on the sidelines, and Ray Kwardnight needs it, and they tape their games, their practices, and then put together, it's, it goes to colleges, it's part of their portfolio.
Okay, okay.
It's a video portfolio.
It's also used for training.
Yeah.
So it's also videotaping them, it's digital, so that pitchers can see their posture and their position and all of that.
Okay, so it's not just football, it's...
Oh, no, no, it's for, for everybody. And it started out, it's being used more for other things, but it started out, Ray wanting to be able to give our kids, you know, the, kind of a leg up and the same kind of opportunity, because we know that a lot of parents go out and have these videos made, and they're part of the portfolio.
Oh, interesting.
Well, a lot of our kids didn't have that. So Ray started, when we started this, that's what Ray was doing, was providing that, so it would give that student-athlete a video to send with their application.
Oh, good, it's still pretty special.
Yeah. I think it's been around four or five years. The other communication I wanted to mention, it was in your packet, the, with my letter, was from Westfield State.
Oh.
I have never had this happen before, so I wanna read the letter. And it's a letter from, to Principal Pellon and Principal Roach. "Thank you for hosting my colleagues from Westfield Public Schools and me last Monday, March 23, at Goodrich Academy and Pittsburgh High School. We appreciate the hospitality showed to us by both of you, your administrative teams, faculties, and students. Our visit to both Pittsburgh High, was, to both Pittsburgh High schools was extremely informative and will prove valuable as we move to develop our own alternative education pathway in Westfield. In the meantime, please accept my," and this is where Bob pays attention, "$250 donation to Pittsburgh High School, a school within a school program, and $250 donation to Goodrich Academy. In closing, my colleagues and I appreciate Pittsburgh's commitment to educating all students and inspiring work taking place every day at both high schools. We look forward to collaborating with both of you again in the future." And this came out of a presentation that, that Mike Pellon and Jeremy and I did at one of these conferences, and one of the superintendents, that the conference was the superintendent from Westfield, and said, we'd like to send some people to Pittsburgh to hear about these programs. But this was just amazing.
Was that neglected from our agenda? I don't see this.
No, it wasn't, it was in the packet packet, so it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, so we can add it to our agenda.
So we can add it, we did, we got it after this was done, so it needs to be put on the agenda in terms of accepting the $250.
Okay.
Pays to go on tour, I guess.
Do we have to make a motion to put that to the agenda?
No.
No, I'll do it, it'll be on the annexed agenda.
Okay, okay. The work permits, I know we skipped over the policy, this is the second reading. Any, any questions before we move on to the action items? Okay. Ladies, anything to say? Okay, moving on to the action items. 503 is to approve the recommendation to change the name of Arnhow Farm Road to Red Raider Way.
Second.
We should probably, this is commentary, to say that this is changing a small portion of it, not the entire thing. So you'll still find, and the address will still be Arnhow Farm Road for the high school. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 504, first reading of the school calendar for next year.
Motion.
I heard a motion, is there a second?
Yes, probably, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion accepted. 505, 40 chairs from Holy Cross donation.
Second.
All in favor... Our motions are weak tonight. I was gonna say, is it my ears, or is it the...
I heard a motion twice, so I didn't know who else said it, so I have to do my second.
How you doing over there, Kim?
I'm going with Pete, Pete, Pete.
Come on, Pete. Okay, there was a motion and second, according to Kim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 506, this is submitting the 21st Century Grant.
Motion to submit.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 507, this is to accept the DSAC grant.
Motion to accept.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Second reading, work permit policy.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 509, school choice funds for the editing... 509, school choice funds for the editing software for the athletics.
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 510, motion to...
Pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There is no secretive session, so is there a move to adjourn?
Motion for adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.